Okay, everyone else give about a 30-second warning. If we can get everyone to take their seats, please. We'll start in about 30 seconds. Okay, everyone will go ahead and call this meeting to order. If everyone could please take their seats. If everyone could please take their seats, so I can go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council Meeting for April 12th, 2022. The first item on our agenda this evening are proclamations and presentations. The agenda says "Presentation of Students/Citizens of the Month," but that will be at our next meeting. And the first proclamation that we will discuss this evening is the proclamation declaring April 2022 as National Volunteer Month. Melanie, are you planning to join me? For National Volunteer Month?
I can't, but I wasn't sure.
Okay. Could I have any members of boards and commissions, please come down and join me here at the front of the room? You'll have to come around to the left. I know it's like a 40-mile hike down here. I apologize. You're going to get your steps in tonight, but any members of Gilbert Town Boards and Commissions, please, join me down here. And as you're heading down, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation. "National Volunteer Month, whereas volunteers are one of our community's greatest assets, continuing to give back by volunteering with the Gilbert Police, Fire and Rescue, and Parks and Recreation Departments, as well as by serving on numerous boards, commissions, committees, foundations, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient; and whereas volunteers serve the community with pride and commitment; and whereas volunteers work to ensure Gilbert, Arizona, is a place where we anticipate needs, strive to create solutions, and help people; and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, state, and town; whereas the mayor and town council are proud of all of you and thankful for the volunteers that serve our community." Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Volunteer Month. Give yourselves a hand. I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves and tell us which board, commission, task force, et cetera, et cetera, you serve on for the Town of Gilbert.
Hi, I'm Amber Coleman. I serve on the Public Facilities Municipal Property Corporation Commission. It is.
Dave Rosenfeld, Vice Chair of the Veterans Advisory Board.
Mike Bailey, Veterans Advisory Board.
TJ Clausen, I'm Chairman of Redevelopment Commission.
Tony Panapinto, Health Insurance Trust.
Marcos Romero, Judicial Selection and Advisory Board.
Katie Hackett, Chair of Community Engagement Task Force.
Pamela Reinsmith, Veteran Advisory Board and Chair of the Subcommittee USS Arizona.
Noah Mont, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Bob Farren, I am the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board.
Paul Gonzalez, Parks and Recreation Board.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Lowe. I am with the Judicial Selection and Advisory Committee.
I wish my board was that long. Les Presmic, Chairman of the Veterans Advisory Board.
And I'm Jan Simon. I'm the Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jan. Can I just take everybody's hand, please? Left. You can do anything quickly, huh? It's nice to see you guys. Thanks, Bob, Noah, and congratulations on having a chair. Katie, nice to see you. Thank you. Hi, TJ. Mike, I see you a lot. Dave, thank you. Let's all get a photo together. Taller people to the back. I don't want to say shorter people to the front, right? Yeah. Are you ready? All right, ready? Ready, set, one, two, and... Thank you. Thank you, all. That goes to you. Okay, so we're supposed to do the invocation and flash? Okay. What's next? Next, can I please have Dave Richens join me from United Food Bank? I want to thank Amy Keller and Fran Louder. If you could both please stand up. Amy Keller, Fran Louder, please stand up. I want to thank you both for all of the work that you did for this food drive that we're about to recognize. Everyone that came and gave on the days that you both helped organize, set up. You were out there moving bins. You got the pallets donated. I mean, like, the list is long, and I know. And I thank you both for all of that you do for the Town of Gilbert and serving on for our town with me also. Dave Richens, CEO of United Food Bank. Nice to have you here. No beard this time. You were here recently with a full beard. I'm going to give this to you.
Are you sure it's risky to give the microphone to a guy from Mesa? We want to recognize several groups that participated in the food drive. We had big, big numbers this year and really grateful for everybody who participated. We think we got all of you. We apologize if we missed a few of you. Please let us know after. And we also realize that some of you could not be in attendance, so thank you by proxy. So I can read your name. Come on down for a photo op, and we're going to give you a certificate, but we'll move this pretty quick. So American Leadership Academy, Gilbert North. If you're with that organization, come on down. You're the next contestant on the food drive. Round of applause. Very good. They did. Evident Life and Gilbert Steak they put together. Evident Life, come on down. Anybody taking pictures now? Okay. If you'd like, whatever you'd like to do. Okay. Yeah, I want to get in. Okay, very good. All right, First United Methodist Church, come on down. Anybody from First United? Thank you, First United. Living Word Bible Church. Living Word Bible Church, thank you so much for your support, how much you did for us. Thank you. Redemption Church. Tyler, I think you're here. Get on down here, buddy. St. Anne's Roman Catholic Church, St. Anne's. Great work. Come on down, Tyler. We have several... All right. Gilbert Steak, Boulder Creek Steak, come on down. Chandler East Steak, Gateway Steak. If somebody from each of those steaks could come on down. Tell Becca who you are. Becca, up here, I want to recognize Becca Gilbert. She's our newest food drive manager and rock star at United Food Bank. I think your town was named after her, maybe. I don't know. Maybe four. Okay, Highland West Steak, Higley Steak, and Santana Steak. I think the last two there's nobody here from, but Highland Steak, come on down. All right. Next, let's get Seville Steak, Superstition Springs Steak, and Williams Field Steak. Get your certificate. Oh, sorry.
We're trying to multi-down. See what happens.
Williams Field Steak and the Gilbert Young Single Adult Steak. And the Stapley Steak, if you could head down too, if you're with... If you're here. Are there any LDS steaks that I didn't call that are in attendance? Stapley, I think is coming down. I think the last ones I recognized, Desert Cross Lutheran, Greenville Steak, and Valvista Steak. Anybody we missed? I think for the last thing we need to say is thank you to the town and residents of Gilbert and the businesses in Gilbert who helped so much. Thank you so much, everyone who made this food drive a success, and we're really looking forward to next year.
I think we should get Amy Keller and Fran Louder to come down here for a photo with Dave Richens and I, because this wouldn't have been possible without the two of you. You worked so hard for this food drive. I know you don't want to be recognized, but I'm going to anyway. And our own team member, Melanie Dykstra, in the back up there, that helped run this food drive also. Thank you. And let's get one big photo with Dave Richens and the whole group. Come on, everybody. Shorter people in the front, taller people in the back. Tyler knows how it works. Gwen knows how it works.
We also... I can't... I'd be remiss if I didn't message Melissa. Everybody knows Melissa. Melissa Forrester, big part. We won't let her down here because we don't want her to upstage your outfits.
You're going to look at her first. Up at the big camera. Make sure. One more photo, might... Hope you're headed. You're good. One, two, three. Thank you, everyone. That would draw some comments.
That was a good one.
That was a good one. Thank you all for all you do. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. So I apologize, our agenda was a little out of order this evening, and I followed right along like I'm supposed to, but it made me go out of order with the presentations. Next, we will have our invocation by Reverend Katie Sexton. If you could come down to the podium here in the front, please. I can see you back there, Reverend.
Well, good evening, Gilbert. I bring you greetings all the way from Glendale, where I traveled from today. Do you know you're an hour away from Glendale? Yeah, it's good. I'm heading to Mesa after this, so it's okay. It is good to be with you tonight. My name is Reverend Katie Sexton Wood, and I am the Executive Director of the Arizona Faith Network, which is an interfaith network that was historically the council of churches for Arizona. So we retain our seat with the National Council of Churches. We work with all the bishops and judicatory heads across the state from various faith traditions, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I do have to give a shout out to Melanie, who I work with on heat relief throughout Maricopa County. She is amazing. Many kudos, Melanie. Thank you. Tonight, we are in the middle of a holy week and a holy season for many faith traditions. We are in the middle of Ramadan, so Ramadan Kareem to anyone who is observing. We are in the middle of Holy Week, journeying to Easter that is happening for Christian traditions, and on Friday Passover begins. Sunday is Buddhist New Year. Later this month is the Gathering of Nations for our indigenous communities. There's a Baha'i holiday in there, too. So April is essentially a big, big, holy month for all of our traditions in Arizona. With that, I will ask everyone to pray with me in your own way tonight. Please pray with me. O gracious and holy God, we come from various traditions, various places, various histories, various beliefs, gathering tonight for the goodness of your people, for the goodness of our neighbors, for the goodness of Gilbert. Be with us and in our hearts as we hold Ukraine close, as we hold those who are suffering the ravages of war, as we hold our neighbors in our hearts who are suffering the ravages of hunger, of being homeless, of losing someone. God, we wander into this holy season, gathering tonight, asking you to retune our thoughts to this time, this place, and the needs of these your people. We pray for our lawmakers, for our council members, for our government officials on all levels, that you may guide them and us to do your will here, now, and always. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you for traveling from Glendale. Yes, that is quite a long ways to come. We appreciate you. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I will get to my next presentation, I promise. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are very honored to have Girl Scout Troop 3626 with us tonight, so I'd like to invite them and these lovely ladies up to the front so they can assist me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, we moved the... Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. Could you tell me your first name and age?
I'm Kaia, and I'm 10.
I'm Charlie, and I'm 10.
I'm Emma, and I'm 9.
I'm Amelia, and I'm 9.
I'm Violet, and I'm 10.
I'm Lily, and I'm 10.
I'm Mila, and I'm 8.
I'm Emmy, and I'm 8.
I'm Nadia, and I'm 10.
I'm Johnny, and I'm 10.
I'm Ava, and I'm 10.
I'm Breanna, and I'm 11.
Excellent, thank you. You're with Girl Scout Troop 3626. Who would like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight? Okay, come close. The ones that... Raise your hand. Come close. Come up here. All right, we're going to start. One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies. You did a great job. The mayor and council are all out of practice from having scouts at their meetings because we haven't had many recently, so we appreciate you joining us. One more presentation. Dave Rosenfeld, front and center, please. Do you want anyone else from the VAB to join you? Just by himself, okay? And then we're going to ask Peyton Pierce to join us. Cadet Peyton Pierce to join us. I know you didn't, because I have to be standing next to you. We're going to ask Cadet Peyton Pierce to join us, correct?
Or we can have that young cadet come down here. Peyton. Colonel Vaughn, come on down. Senior math sergeant on top. Being a retired Army guy, I don't go anywhere without having some remarks prepared. So Colonel Vaughn, you got to get up here. You don't have a choice no matter. You don't have a choice no matter. We got an official photographer right here. It's not often that a retired non-commissioned officer gets to boss around a colonel, so. Mayor Peterson, Town Council members, thank you for allowing the Town of Gilbert Veterans Advisory Board this few minutes. There are few greater resources in our nation than our veterans, and our board members are trying to do a few things to get veterans out and about and ingrained again in the town. We have a wellness committee, town sponsorship of the USS Arizona and everything that that involves. We have an events committee, which will be doing things like the Memorial Day event coming up, and this is what happens when you get old, kids. But we've recently stood up and had the inaugural JROTC Cadet of the Year competition. This is the first time that we have done this. Cadet Peyton Pierce of Higley High School, under the leadership of Colonel David Vaughn and Senior Master Danny Alltop, was everything that we had hoped to see in our cadets. Now, let me take a moment and share with you, if you haven't served in the military, it is intimidating to go in front of a board. It is intended to be intimidating to go in front of a board. Our board comprised a retired Air Force Special Operations Tactical Controller, a retired Army paratrooper, a Marine-turned-RN, a soldier-turned-IT director, and the mayor of the town this young lady has grown up in. That is the definition of a bit intimidating. Now, it didn't work out very well because the mayor decided to make her laugh while we were at the board, so got over a little bit there. This young lady has been the most improved cadet during her freshman class. She was the flight commander her sophomore year, squadron commander her junior year, and she is now the corps commander for the entire school her senior year. She's received awards from the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Sons of the American Revolution, the Air Force Association, the Better Business Bureau, the Kitty Hawk Air Society, the City of Phoenix, and that's just like the first paragraph of what they wrote. She had informed the board that she intends to go to our local community college and then on to university to get a degree in epidemiology. So, you know, service to country is just that. It doesn't matter if you're wearing the uniform or you're serving in something like that medical field, that service to country is what is shining on this young lady. She's done an amazing job her high school career, and we are all very proud of her. So, now I get to take these off. Mayor, if you would help me present this lovely young plaque. Along with that, we've got this beautiful gym bag, and this gym bag that actually has Town of Gilbert 2022 Junior ROTC Cadet of the Year embossed on the face. Inside, there's a T-shirt that says the same. There's a pocket knife, don't take it to school. There's flashlight, and there's some other goodies as well. So if you would all help me give her a resounding round.
I'm sorry, I made a laugh.
Mom, did you get the shot?
Congratulations, Mom. You raised a great girl, and the two of you have done a great job with her, too. Thank you. Thank you for sharing her with us.
Let me real quickly, Governor, can we have the members of the board that actually participated stand up very quickly? We've got Mike Bailey.
Yeah.
We've got.
Pamela Rhinesmith. Eric's not here. Eric Ballister was.
Eric's not here.
And myself.
We also have our chair, Les. So, thank you, our veterans. Appreciate your.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Congratulations, Peyton. Next, Chevelli, can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. We have, unfortunately, we have three council members absent from this evening's meeting, including our vice mayor. Councilmember September has offered to participate and help out this evening with the items that the vice mayor typically handles, so we'll start with communications from citizens. Councilmember September.
Thank you, Mayor, just a point of clarification. I was told to do this.
He was voluntold by me.
So, we're gonna move on to the communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on any matter within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda tonight. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking the matter be put on a future agenda. Anyone wishing to speak before the council tonight needs to fill out a speaker request card. You'll find them just outside those center doors in the lobby. Fill it out. You can bring it up to the clerk right up here. Chevelli will take it from you. I'll end up with it, and I will call your name when it's time. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds at the discretion of the mayor for ending a speaker's time at the podium. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Our first speaker tonight is Tom Patterson. Please come on up to the podium over here to the right.
Is Tom Patterson here?
Tom Patterson available?
Does his, does his card say communications from citizens?
It does.
Does it?
And yes, I wish to speak.
Okay. Tom Patterson? Okay, we've done a couple calls. Moving on, council member?
Okay, moving on, we're gonna move to our consent calendar. All items listed in the consent calendar are approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action at this time. Other agenda items may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Tonight, Mayor, we have item number eight that has been requested to be removed from consent. Councilmember Anderson, and do we want to discuss that first, or do we want to make a vote on the rest of the consent calendar?
Up to you, sir. You're running the show.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and vote on the rest of the consent calendar? So I'll, I'll take a motion.
Can you list the items from the consent calendar, please, that we would be?
I actually can do that.
Thank you.
So we will be voting under consent for items five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
I'll move to approve those items.
I have a first, who have a second?
Second.
Motion passes. So next would be discussion of item eight. Councilmember Anderson. I'll try and be brief with this, but I do have some observations and concerns with this item. This is an item where we're asking for contingency funds to be used in legal matters with the town. My concern is, while I, I'm one of the strongest proponents of the right of citizens to bring grievances to their elected officials, as guaranteed by the Constitution, but I think there's, there's, there's also a responsibility when you do that to try and work out those grievances without costing either side a lot of money. That doesn't seem to be the case here, where we're asking for an, a budget to be expanded from $285,000 up to almost a half a million dollars to cover legal expenses. And I also have a responsibility to account to the residents of our community where our tax funds, dollars are being spent. And every year, everyone that has participated understands that we do an annual survey of the community, and in that survey, we're given priorities. And the priorities that we've had for the number, for a number of years have always included public safety and improvements to our transportation infrastructure. Those have always been at the top of the list. And in this case, where we are being asked to now add to our legal budget by $175,000, I just wanted our citizens to understand that equates to something similar to three police cruisers that we could have bought, one or two positions in the police and fire department that we could have funded, several intersection improvements that could have been made. We also have several turn lanes and safety congestion improvements at different intersections that could have been done with that, this $175,000. So I just wanted to point that out in the responsibility that we have to notify the public where the funds are being spent. And again, I would encourage, as there are grievances that people bring to the council, let's try and work those out without costing us legal fees to try and resolve those issues. It's money not well spent. Thank you. With, with that, are you looking for a motion? I am. I move approval. Motion passes. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember September. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, for those comments. We'll now move to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Do we have any slips from anyone to speak on any items? No, thank you very much. Councilmembers, would you like to hear, would you like to, I'll open the public hearing, and we have six liquor licenses. Would you like to tackle those all with one vote and then move on to the other items?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion, please?
I move to approve items.
Close the public hearing. Go ahead.
I move to approve items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember September. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Anderson. Those items pass with a 4-0 vote. Moving on to item number 20, this is the bond discussion to conduct a hearing and consider adoption of the resolution authorizing the sale and issuance of the Town of Gilbert General Obligation Bonds, Series 2022. Do we have staff for a presentation for this, Patrick? Or is it just for, I'll open the public hearing.
Mayor, members of the council, we don't have a presentation. We'd have to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Oh, Hawken, Hawken Johansson, Johansson is here, just in case we have questions. Would anyone like to ask Hawken any questions on this item?
Yes, I would.
Okay, Councilmember September.
Hi, Hawken. Thanks for being here. With respect to the bonds, I noticed the amount is almost $200 million. Can you, I know one of the things that, that the town staff does, especially on the finance side, is we try to not borrow all the money. So the, the bond that was approved by the voters was over $500 million. We're not going to borrow all $500 million because we can't use it fast enough, and we'll end up paying interest on hundreds of millions of dollars before we get a chance to use it. So we're gonna borrow two, almost 200 million. My question is, is that the right number? Like, can it be 50 million at a time, or 100 million twice, like over a period of time, so that we're not paying interest on money that are, that's going unused? Can you, can you help, help me understand that, that why is 200 million the right number?
Yeah, absolutely. Mayor, council members, we did, as a staff, with our experts that, that we hired to help us through these very complex transactions, look at a number of different scenarios. We looked at, one, how much we can spend, how many projects can we effectively construct in a certain time period. Cost of issuance is a big thing that we consider there, too. And so if we were to issue much smaller dollar amounts, we would pay significantly more to the banks and to other people and contractors and professionals that help us transact and sell these bonds. And so one thing that we do take into consideration is the issuance cost, and there are some economies of scale there that we look at. We did look at a number of different scenarios of different sizes, and we did quite an extensive dive into interest rates and what would need to happen in certain circumstances, and where there might be some, some areas where it is most likely to be the best thing that we can do. And we do feel like we found the happy median between projects that we need to get started on and we need funding for, that we can spend within the legal requirements, but also in an efficient way, while also being very cognizant and aware of how much interest we might be carrying with those funds. The funds that we don't spend, we also are able to invest, and so as rates increase, we are able to invest those funds and, and shrink the amount of effective interest that we would pay for that period of time where we have not issued them. And so we do look carefully also at that from an arbitrage perspective, one, to make sure we're not earning too much interest, but to make sure that we are maximizing again, or minimizing, rather, the amount of interest and maximizing the capital we can put towards projects.
Thank you for all that, Hawken. I appreciate the explanation. So there's, there's costs, like a closing cost if you buy a home every time you do this, and, and you've had this, your, our third-party consultant review the scenarios and come up with the number of 200 million. And then you said that we can invest the money that we don't spend right away so that it's not, so that we're not just paying interest on it, we're actually gaining interest. But you said something kind of funny, that you wanted to make sure that it's not gaining too much interest? When is that ever a problem?
Excellent question. The IRS wants to make sure that we are not trying to issue bonds to earn money. The purpose of issuing these bonds and the reason they are tax exempt and the reason we are able to is because we're doing that for civic purposes, and so we are limited where we are not able to make more interest than what we are paying. And if we make any more than that, then we have to pay that amount to the IRS.
Because it's tax-free?
Because, yes.
You got me. All right, thank you. That's all I have here.
Thank you, Councilmember September. I asked the same question of our town manager a couple of days ago, and so the staff did some work on that to see if these numbers were right. Councilmember Anderson, any questions or comments? Councilmember Kaprowski? Go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve item 20.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Vote passes 4-0. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, that would be the Community Development Block Grant Funds. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Jennifer, are you here to do a presentation? Jennifer Loria? Jennifer, is this your full, first full presentation for us with CBD, CB, I always do this, CDBG funds?
Yes, this is my first annual action plan.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation for us?
I can do one if you would like, otherwise I can ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thanks. Anyone have any questions? Or would you like the presentation? Presentation?
I'd like to see the presentation.
Presentation, Jennifer.
Okay, so our ask of council is to approve the Community Block Grant Annual Action Plan for 2022, 2023. Some background on the CDBG funding. It was initiated in 1975, is a program focused on returning federal tax dollars to the local community. Gilbert has been a part of this since 1997, receiving funding. Any programs or projects that we choose to participate in have to meet one of the three national objectives, which are low, moderate income persons to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or to meet community development needs, having a particular urgency such as a federal disaster. We tend to focus on the low, low and mod income persons for our projects and services. For this year's annual action plan, we're focusing on three projects, which is the ADA Sidewalk Repairs in the Heritage District, which is ongoing. We just completed Phase One, working on Phase Two, and looking to continue that project in order to comply with the ADA plan that was. in order to comply with the ADA plan that was completed in 2018. Emergency and Minor Home Repair Program, which this year we've served so far 58 homeowners with this program, helping with their home modification needs, trying to keep them in their homes, and then administrative fees as well. And also the home program, where we purchase one permanent affordable rental home each year. Currently, we have 18 homes in this program. That's pretty much my presentation. I can go over some previous projects that we've, we've been able to complete with this funding. In 2012, we completed a septic-to-sewer project, which gave three dwellings and connected them to the town's main water. In 2012, we focused on energy efficiency at Page Commons. As you know, the Heritage Center was also built, not built, but renovated with these funds as well. So looking to continue with these funds and continue with the ADA sidewalk as part of our infrastructure project for this year.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any questions, council members?
No, no questions. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing then. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember September, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Vote passes 4-0. Now on to our last item on our public hearing agenda. I'll open the public hearing on the Code of Gilbert, conduct hearing and consider adoption of an ordinance amending Code of Gilbert. I'm not going to read the whole definition. Does anyone have any questions for staff? I think we have continued this item a couple of times to make sure that all questions have been asked and answered. Any further questions? No? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, a second by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to administrative items, we have boards and commissions consider the appointment of Brian Cannon to the Parks and Recreation Board with a partial term beginning April 12th, 2022, and ending May 12th, 2022, as well as an additional full term beginning May 13th, 2022, and ending May 12th, 2025. I will go ahead and move to approve that item. Second. Motion by Mayor and seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Since our Parks Board liaison isn't with us, take care of that. Any boards, commissions, and committee reports from council liaisons?
Sure, Mayor.
Yes.
So I'm the liaison to the Planning Commission, and we talked about volunteers today, and we had our chairman, our vice chair, and I just wanted to acknowledge all of our planning commissioners, because they do an amazing job. They consistently apply their, their time and talent to being planning commissioners. They, like us, get packets a week in advance. They have to read through those packets. They have to contact staff. They contact applicants. They meet with applicants, and then they, then they conduct their hearings. And it takes time to do those things. It takes time away from their families. So I want to thank them, and I want to thank their families for sharing them with us. And I appreciate everything they do for the town. There's so much that they do that we, we never see, it never gets to us. They're not only the planning commission, they're also a design review board, and, and I just appreciate everything they do. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I visited with them on Wednesday night at their planning commission meeting and thanked them for their time also. Any other reports from council? Seeing none, I move to communications. Report from town manager on current events.
Mayor, members of the council, nothing tonight.
Is that because you're tired? Just kidding. Any report from council on current events?
Mayor, I just wanted to speak, oh, sorry. Go ahead. I have something to...
Scott and Scott.
I just wanted to speak briefly about the volunteers that were here this evening. You know, Gilbert is growing very fast. In the years that I've lived here, I've seen amazing growth. I think a lot of us have. And, and I can, I feel some of the, the concern that people have, I hear the concerns for how quickly Gilbert is growing and how people feel like we're losing that small-town feel. And I think one of the ways that we can all help keep Gilbert small is by, if we have time, to donate our time to one of these amazing groups that was here tonight, and to contributing in that way. And in, in that way, I think it'll help to continue to keep Gilbert feel small, even as we continue to grow. So I just wanted to share that observation, and I think it'd be a great way for people to get involved here in our community, to keep it a community.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I just wanted to recognize Councilmember Hendricks, which you all have noticed is not here tonight. You may not know, he's actually in Ukraine, and he's rendering service in Ukraine, and has sent me some text photos, and I'm quite impressed and have to hand it to him, being over there, volunteering his time in Ukraine and the things that he's doing will, I'm sure, get more report from him when he comes back. But I want to recognize him for that service.
Thank you for sharing. Councilmember Anderson? Anything else? Councilmember Kaprowski? No?
Thank you. I'll move on to reports from me. I wanted to mention that April 5th was Golden Rule Day, and several of us attended the Golden Rule Awards banquet in the city of Mesa last Thursday evening with our Police Department Command staff and our town manager, Nikki McCarty. And if, for those of you that don't know, Gilbert is a golden rule town, and we encourage residents to treat one another how they would want to be treated. The four pillars of the golden rule are respect, kindness, civility, and empathy. We're hoping that everyone will follow those as we move forward in this community. And the, the things that Councilmember September just mentioned about our volunteers and the members of our community, and what makes this community have a small-town feel is, I think it's different for everyone, and the growth has had a great impact on everyone. I happened to speak at a panel today, so the details are fresh in my mind, but in 1970, the town of Gilbert had 1,971 residents. Now, 1970 wasn't that long ago. Council, Councilmember Kaprowski doesn't remember it, but I do, and you do. And then from 1980 to 2000, the population of Gilbert doubled every five years. Doubled every five years. So this growth isn't new for us in Gilbert. It's been going on. I've been here since 1995. When I moved here, there were about 55,000 people, and we're at approximately 273,000. But it really comes down to how we treat each other and that small-town feel. And I have the opportunity to get out and meet with and talk to so many people. And one thing that I enjoy doing personally is if I see somebody's having some sort of a fundraiser, I love to stop by and just visit with them. And I've been to two recently, and all I do is cry with people, but that's what it's all about. And it's the feeling that you get when you're doing something for someone else, and it's the feeling that you get when you volunteer in your community, whether it's through a church, running a food drive, whatever it is that you choose, and however it is that you choose to give back to this community is what keeps you having the feeling of what Gilbert really is and how we see it on a daily basis. So I thank you for all you do. Again, I think all of our volunteers, we'll talk about them again at our next meeting in April. And meeting adjourned.